So, welcome to our May 23, 2017 School Committee meeting. I don't know if we had a signup sheet for open forum. If there is anyone from the audience who would like to come and address in open forum, feel free to approach the podium now. We must be doing a good job then. Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to move item 5B12 off of the consent agenda, please.
Second?
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda, please. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, sorry. Retirements, middle school technology education, Carl Chamberlain. Appointments, these are all for department head positions at the high school. High school PE, health, Matt McGuire. High school world language, Fran Mello. High school science, Jim Saunders. High school math, Nancy Carrero. High school English, Sarah Cabral. High school fine arts and careers, Judy Moore. High school special education, Barbara DeSantis. High school guidance, Lisa Borges. High school guidance department head, Andy Gatchek. The next is sixth and seventh grade math teacher at the middle school, Amy Richards. And number 11 is long-term math substitute at the high school, Cara Dohpart.
Okay. So regarding item 5B12...
I just had one question.
You might want to...
It's, uh...
All yours.
Okay. Mr. Eric, thanks for sending that extra document. I...my question is this. If there is a person who is subject qualified, in this case it's a PE...
Yep.
And other candidates who are not...we are not required to appoint or hire the person who has the proper certification?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my question.
I did, um...
Anyone else?
I guess maybe I can...I'll address it later under announcements because it's not really posted that way, so.
Okay.
I just have a question about the policy, but I'll talk about it under eight, nine.
Okay. And maybe that will be a subject for future meetings as well?
Right.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to replace item 5B12.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor of item 5B12? Okay, opposed? Thank you. Correspondents?
I'm sorry. It's tough taking minutes, you know, walking and chewing gum. We have a correspondence from the Rhode Island Department of Revenue, Division of Municipal Finance, and I'll let Mr. Fiore just explain what that correspondence pertains to.
Did you announce 12?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back and announce number 12. Taylor O'Connor.
Thank you.
Enclosed in the package is a memo from the Department of Municipal Finance. The reason this is in here is all the communities, school districts, are required to now report their financial data through a portal through Municipal Finance. Typically, we've always sent our data through RIDE and then the quarterly report that the committee sees is how we would get our information to the municipal side of state government. Well, now they're trying to automate it and basically catch up to the school side. They're trying to implement a consistent chart of accounts, and they're taking a lot of what we've done on the school side and trying to leverage off of that. So, we had a meeting yesterday. There were a group of pilot communities that had volunteered to go first and work with the municipal sides of government to report their data together through the portal, which in the long run is supposed to automate things a little bit more. Typically, now we're just sending in Excel sheets and PDF files to the state government. We, being the municipal side in Tiverton, volunteer to be in phase two, which is another dozen or so communities. So, we're now reaping the benefit of not being the first to go, and a lot of the improvements that have been flushed out over the past year are going to be in place already for us. So, in reality, it doesn't a lot...we're not changing a lot of what we do. Our quarterly reports now will just be submitted to the municipality in probably an Excel sheet, and they'll be able to take that data, combine it with the town side, and send it off to the state. But we are going to have to do some adjustments to what we do, specifically with the timetable of when things are due. They're going to try to be more aggressive. We typically send our stuff to RIDE quarterly. The municipal side isn't going to be any more aggressive than that. So, I think it's a matter of just working with the town and continuing to do what we do. So, I'm not anticipating any big changes. So, I'll keep the school committee posted. The first thing they...at the meeting yesterday, the first thing that's going to change is our budget has to be sent to RIDE earlier than normal. But as far as reporting to the municipal affairs department, I think the first report we have to do is the first quarter of fiscal year '18. And instead of putting the quarterly report in the package like I've been doing, I'll put whatever new format they're going to require in the school committee's agendas so they can stay abreast of this.
What did you mean by needs to be sent earlier than usual?
The...
I can hardly hear.
For the...right now...
I should turn up the air conditioner.
There's not a real structured format as far as deadlines and when the state municipal affairs has been requiring us to submit...or the town to submit their data. So, they're just trying to be more structured now. They're going to have, you know, X number of days after the end of the quarter. The town's going to be required to submit the data for all of Tiverton.
Okay.
So, I just need to work with the town treasurer to make sure that data is in on a timely basis. I don't anticipate a problem with doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to move up item 8B, C, and D.
I make a motion to move items 8, B, C, and D to next.
All those in favor? Okay. So, item 8B, recommendation to hire a commissioning agent for the high school and middle school construction project.
Yes. Per our last school committee meeting, Mr. DiQuatro came before us and was seeking permission to go out and bid, seek bids for a commissioning agent. RGB did so. They had three companies that they were looking at. They are recommending for the school committee to hire the AKF Group LLC to be our commissioning agent. And I've asked Dave to come here to answer any questions you may have about that, if you have any at all.
Thank you, Mr. DiQuatro. Give us a little thumbnail. Yeah?
So, master price agreement, MPAs, an agreement that we can take three bidders off that list and we can go out and bid for that. We decided to include another bidder that we've worked with in the past that has been less expensive and does the same job. We've asked them to bid, that was AKF, as the superintendent just alluded to. They were about $19,100 cheaper than the low bid. So, we got three bids, one for $63,339, the other one for $58,900, the last one for $39,000, that was AKF. All qualified firms, all can do the job respectively. This is the amount that they proposed. They've all given the same scope of work and the same design development documents. Like every contract and like every sub, there are chances that there'll be change orders or extras if they come across something that wasn't in the contract or unforeseen type conditions, but this is the base contract price.
Okay.
So, I'd like to give a recognition for $39,975 to proceed to give a good little green light.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Just a couple of quick questions. So, you've worked with this firm before and have full confidence in them?
Well, I'm actually working with them right now, the Attorney General's office as well.
Okay. And were there any concerns or discussion about the bid or the selection of this firm in the building committee last night?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone else, questions?
I guess my only question is that there's a pretty sizable gap between your low and high bids. Any thoughts?
You know, we de-scoped and we looked at the difference between $4,000 and $19,000. And what I can say is that AKF is an aggressive company. They came in when we just did the last job for the Attorney General's. They came in $25,000 cheaper than what we were doing out as well. So, they go out aggressively. It's time. It's, I guess, time and money. And they don't really produce anything. All they do is they review.
Right.
So, I can't really judge anybody. One produces one, they'll produce two. They're supposed to review, report back, and...
And again, this firm will be working on behalf of the school department...
Right.
...to oversee, in addition to RGB, but they look at what RGB is doing as well as...
Their essence auditing.
A contractor, the general contractor.
All right. Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Just one more. How long have they been in business?
AKF is a pretty large company. They have a headquarters in Boston, Mass. I don't know how long. I paid out of the three...Kali is the biggest, but the second largest. So, they're all pretty sizable companies.
They're all well-established.
How long have you worked with them for?
AKF, I've worked with them about two years.
Okay.
Two years consistently. So, they're coming in from Boston. I used to use either Winters out of Rhode Island or Turner out of Rhode Island. They're supplying a good job.
Okay.
So, that's why we had to allow them.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? Yes, 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 yes?
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Item 8C, presentations from boosters, PTOs, and tempo?
Yes. This request came from Mrs. Farnworth regarding having and inviting, I should say, our PTO booster, our PTO presidents, booster presidents, and our tempo presidents to come and just give a brief, one- to two-minute blurb. And I'm sure all the presidents are like, you know, keep it brief, Bill. So, they will just come up, give an explanation as to what all the great things they do for our students and for our teachers.
Did you guys draw straws or...
Why don't we just go in the order? We see Mr. Cabral first. Why don't we just ranger?
Ranger?
Sorry. He's the first guy. He's the first one I saw.
The Lone Ranger?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Bykuna, and I'm the president of Ranger PTO. So, our focus for the 2006-2017 school year encompassed three main goals for our school community. First, we wanted to create and support educational activities that coincided with the school curriculum. These activities included helping financially support a field trip for each grade, a science fair night. We supported a literacy night and literacy week activities within the school. We brought in the school active book fair into the school in the spring and the fall to encourage literacy opportunities for our families. And we also helped support a mural project in the school. We were able to reconstruct the school mural that was in the old Ranger School and get it back up on the wall. And then we used...the children had the opportunity to use clay and our film to kind of add to the mural and fix some of the pieces that might have been weathered over the years. Secondly, we worked on creating interactive family engagement activities after school hours for our school community. These included our Halloween party, our holiday paint night activity, and our spring carnival activities. And third, our third goal of the year was fundraising to further our ability to better serve our school community. Our main fundraiser in the fall was the clown soup and the little cookies. Our paint night increased some funds. Our raffle baskets at both our Halloween parties and our spring carnival helped a bunch of events. And then some special projects that we worked on this year include creating a yearbook for the first time for the school. And we were also able to buy digital cameras for each pod for the teachers and students to use during special activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Briefly, if you haven't been over to Ranger, that moving of the mural is quite an accomplishment, and they've done a great job with it. I know it's not yet complete, but kudos to everybody involved in that.
Are you still involved with that?
Yes.
Yes, very much so.
It's quite a project.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Laurie, we have Julie.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Julie Delcourt, and I am the president of the Parent Teacher Committee at Tiverton Middle School. We are like the Patriots. We are a team. All of us are brand spanking new to this whole concept of parent teacher committee leadership. We actually developed roles and job descriptions for each office, which really helped out, kept everybody in their lane, and most importantly, no burnout, which was nice. So, we raised a net profit of $6,966 in United States. We held a total of three fundraisers. We supported five concession tables at all five middle school dances, coordinated several passive fundraisers that ran all year to include 943 in box tops. We were rivals with our lovely Bacassett School. They beat our butts, but we really won. Donated...next year. We're sandbagging, just saying. Okay. Donated eight gift cards as prizes for the October Students of the Month. Donated T-shirts to every member of the unified basketball team. We sponsored a Civil War presentation by the Rhode Island Regiment. We sponsored the cost of the Freedom Trail trip for the sixth grade. Sponsored the cost of renting Cathedral Camp to include the cost of the buses as well for the entire eighth grade trip. That's a very important and traditional trip for the eighth grade. We contributed $100 to Cyber Patriots for the cost of future transportation to all their competitions. We sponsored the flowers that Mrs. Towing has, places in front flower boxes so nicely. We sponsored a thank you gift to a volunteer author who actually came and spoke to the students based on the history of slavery. And then lastly, cover your ears, we have a parent teacher...I mean, I'm sorry, a teacher and staff appreciation night coming up. It's a complete and total secret. The theme is Parents in the Spring, and we're really excited about wowing our teachers and our staff and thanking them for all that they do.
Thank you.
Very good.
Fort Potong?
Yes, we are. Thanks for the invite today. I'm Sarah Kerouac, and I am actually the outgoing president of the Core Farm PTO. So, you will see somebody else standing in my place hopefully next year. You'll hear a lot of repetition probably of some of the things that Anna had to say. But as far as fundraisers this year, we are still kind of in our...we're not fundraising anymore. We're kind of in our busy time of year. I know everyone else is kind of winding down in school, but we are thinking about field trips and field day, and we are still pretty active. So, I would say generally, I don't have our end of year figures because of that, but generally, we raise about $10,000 a year and we spend about $10,000 a year. And for the past few years, our fundraising efforts have been very successful. We have a fall and spring book fair as well. A lot of the proceeds of that, we actually put back into the school. So, for instance, we purchased all new books for kindergarten this year. We do spirit wear, which is a local parent out of our own school, and some of that, those proceeds come back to the PTO, and it's great to see the kids all in their spirit wear shirts. We did a kids' paint night. We did a mixed bag fundraiser. We did soup and cookies along with that. We also do a food drive for the East Bay Community Action Program. We sent them bags and bags of...donated a little soup, which was really great. And we do lots of passive fundraising, like box tops, shop and shop, cup and chocolate and all those things. The PTO folks behind me can tell you, they really add up. As far as events, starting...I'm going to list really quickly. It's Israelah Drive, but kindergarten orientation, student welcome. It's...we think, you know, right out of the gate, it's a great opportunity to meet parents and try to engage them to the PTO, which is always a challenge every year. Halloween Party, which is also our first big food drive of the year. We sponsor a holiday shop. We fund the Heaven Rapper coming to visit grade three. We do movie nights. We funded a basketball group this year. We sponsor Reading Week, teacher and staff appreciation week, 100-day school events. We did a roller skating party. We funded a storyteller that came in school. We fund all of our buses for all of the field trips, and we make up for any students that might not be able to pay for the costs associated with the field trip. We buy all of the flowers and flags for the Memorial Day Parade, which, oh, bug, is on Friday. If you are available around 2:00, 2:15, please come by. It is my absolute favorite four-part tradition. It's a parade, but it's really just a bunch of kids walking down a hill. Kind of a tap dancer fashion, but it's great to see the kids with their parts and see them, which is...it's really great. And they get to learn about the session, what it means. And then lastly, Field Day and fourth grade graduation, which for us is right around the corner. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Uh-oh. Well, it's Bacassett, so we wouldn't...yeah, they're putting the pressure on here.
Sorry. I felt like...
So much for neighborhood schools.
...part, so I thought we'd put it in there because we have to keep it brief.
Oh, jeez. Coming from both sides. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jocelyn Sherman, Cassidy PTO. Again, I printed this just because I wanted to really keep it brief because I felt like that was a strong point of us, emphasis coming into this.
It is.
So, going into school year, our goal was to try to keep costs very low or nothing for students to attend family fun nights. And I think we've had a pretty successful year with that. We've had a lot of family fun nights in which we charged nothing so that our students could come. We encouraged that they bring a non-perishable food donation as part of admission, but certainly if they showed up without that donation, it didn't matter. Everyone got to participate. And we raised a lot for the food pantry. I'm not sure the numbers yet.
1,200?
1,200 food items we donated.
Great.
So, that was really successful. As you can see, we supplied a lot of classroom requests for the teachers. Teachers will ask us for tools for their classroom or maybe field trip support, and so that's what we've worked on. And like the other PTO said, this is a busy time of year, field trips, so we're helping to support many of those field trips. And a few assemblies, and as you can see, it's all there. It's been a great year. We have a lot of great parents that are helping us, and we had a pretty good fundraising year as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the middle school because we have tempo, junior, and also athletics. So, I'll...boosters.
Tempo with boosters.
Tempo? Tempo's up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hank Crawford, and I'm here representing Tempo. And like was discussed, there is two Tempos. It's a Tempo Middle School and a Tempo College School. But we meet on a monthly basis. That's all for my...I feel we're woefully unprepared. But I will speak shortly. I'll be back on the schedule. But we do basically the same type of stuff. We take a look, we make sure all the events are covered by parents, people who need to ban the doors, people who need to ban the bake sales. For parade, we have people that walk on the sides to make sure that, you know, there's nobody coming out, people get water and that kind of stuff. Any of the field trips that we have, we'll go down to junior. You know, we make sure that there's enough parents covering that stuff, and we coordinate all those activities. After that, you know, we get into the budget discussions like all the parent teacher organizations do. We review any of the requests that are coming in from band directors for instruments, like, you know, Mr. Al wants a tuba.
He's always wanted a tuba, no matter where he is. He's always looking for a tuba.
It's tough for a parent to extend that out and just enter the game. But we discuss that type of stuff. Maybe some of the fundraisers that come up, we review them, see if it makes sense to do them, do the finances, make sure that, you know, the fundraising we just planned made sense to do and we want to do it again next year.
Good. Great. Thank you. Well done.
Considering for that, Linda Leonard, Tempo, president for...am I a whole thing or sizable? Tempo, that's right. So, no handouts. I can sing for you if you're here. Mr. Al should say, I was really disappointed I had a 23-minute PowerPoint presentation. At least I could have driven. I can get on the lunch break so I can show it in person. So, Tempo is also supporting our educators that are in Tiverton, that are working very hard to foster excellence in our school. Music for us is so much more than what you see through this end product when students are standing before you and playing an instrument. Music encompasses critical analysis. Students have to analyze this musical piece and learn what is this piece about. It encompasses communication. For students that are physically unable to communicate verbally, they're able to communicate through music. So, you're creating the bridge between the two hemispheres of your brain to allow this type of communication, therefore also opening a pathway to allow communication verbally and within their personal relationships. We're encouraging discipline. Anyone needs to spend two minutes...Mr. Al's...Al's time is in my house. If they say nine o'clock, they'll say Mama time or Mr. Al's time. Nine o'clock...Mama's time is nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, Mr. Al's time is 8:45, and don't be late. This man only needed two shop rooms, wherever he went. This is evident. It can be seen anywhere. Artistry, collaboration. Where else do you see fourth graders collaborating with other fourth graders on such a level? It's not a verbal communication. They have to go by Tempo and by what's going on around them. Taking those unseen under QC, two or three minutes is really hard for me. I have to go on forever. So, I think I should make a handout. Problem solving, science, courage, creativity, artistry, expression, metacognition, big buzzword, right? Students have to study and learn how to learn independently. It's not just, okay, put your fingers here and blow. There's so much more to it than that. You have ambusher. They have to learn about their own body, biology, anatomy. All of these are encompassed in what we do in music. Tempo is people behind the scenes that are supporting our educators as they are trying to do all of this for our students. Tempo saved my...used the music program, saved my children's sanity more than once. Quick flip, I almost lost my husband who was in the hospital with cancer. My daughter, Rolada, Papa Al's, and her Tempo family together blew that. Mr. Al would text me during the day to tell me my daughter was okay while I sat beside the hospital bed wondering how much of a woman I was going to have. My husband is fine now. High school, Mr. Sizet checked in when my son was severely depressed and was threatening to take his life. And the first people to contact me were at the medical center. So, this music program is so much more than what you see those students on stage wobbling into instruments or striking them. So, thank you so much for your continued support in our Tempo organization.
Thank you.
Laurie, do you want to do athletics?
Steve Schreier and Kristen Craig were...they won our roosters program. They used to have three kids, and they are tonight overprogrammed the Dylan families, but they did give me some notes, and I will be fond of them. Tiverton Middle School Athletics Roosters have been reestablished and reenergized under new and current president Kristen Craig and TMS Athletic Director Steve Schreier. TMS Roosters President Kristen Craig brainstormed ideas to quickly generate money for this year's middle school sports expenses. These expenses cover the cost of busking to cross-country leagues and boys and girls basketball away games, officiating fees, cross-country youth entry fees, replacement equipment, awards, and other costs. Kristen and Steve fundraised from candy bar sales, Tiverton Athletic apparel sales, bake sales, Tipton decals, and concessions in middle school basketball home game ticket sales. Mrs. Craig and Mr. Schreier also spearheaded a spaghetti dinner, which was now at Little Bear Lodge. The spaghetti dinner included incredible raffle offerings from local businesses and families that donated items such as free Tiverton youth soccer registration, beach dog lacrosse registration, theater tickets for Brothers Performing Arts Center, Newport Massage and Spa, fruit, parrot pack, dick, pepsils, cup and shop gift cards, and play drink. Wow. TMS Athletic Roosters also received a generous donation for Tiverton junior basketball and is waiting on a Verizon donation offered by Stacy Gordon. Coach Michael Brigham also ran soccer camp over April break. All proceeds will be donated to TMS Roosters because we are only a two-sport organization, colored cross-country and boys and girls basketball. We need smaller TMS Roosters looking to increase its members, the hopes that our sports offerings will increase in the near future, and service many more children of Tiverton Middle School. Tiverton Middle School Athletics out of Rhode Island, great after-school activities for our children, but also give confidence amongst our young athletes in hopes that they will continue with athletics moving on to Tiverton Middle School. Wow. And I...of course, I'm not... They are very excited about the re-energized and sort of revitalized Tiverton Middle School institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. Ashley?
Yes. Michael Brigham is the Facebook Rooster's president. Wasn't able to make it. Traveling the town. Didn't quite get the notes over to me as I was hoping, but has hosted a number of events, most recently the golf tournament, which is this past weekend, which is a really successful and always a fun event. We had a mattress sale, concession stands, and other events throughout the year. Just speaking with Coach R, the Athletic Director, they are a significantly contributor to our sporting... Basically, in his words, we wouldn't be able to run many of the sports in Tiverton just because of most of the teams and annual budget in terms of equipment, balls, sporting uniforms, sticks, et cetera. So definitely a question for Tempo Roosters. So they are much gratitude.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Please.
I'm Kelly Levesque, and I am a proud member of the Tiverton Roosters. When my son started here four years ago, the Roosters was defunct. Basically, you probably don't know that, Mr. Ashley. We had no board. Everyone had up and quits a year, the spring before, and it was a mess. There was no money. There was no board. There was no nothing. And as freshman parents, you know, we had all been active in the elementary level and the middle school level, so we all kind of spearheaded the efforts to get it back up and running. We have been very successful over the past four years. And I wish I had brought the handouts from the golf tournament, but I do know, basically what we do at this point is we pull all of the coaches and ask them what they need and how we can support them. So we have done the girls cheerleading uniforms. We've done boys' and girls' basketball uniforms. We do championship jackets, which this year is costing us a fortune. But if they win their championships, we do give them jackets. We still participate. In the beginning, early Roosters was really only known for scholarships and varsity jackets. We are much more than that this year. And last year, we gave $2,000 in athletic scholarships to graduating seniors. I don't know how much we're giving this year, but we have raised thousands and thousands of dollars, and we're very proud to support all of the academic programs. As funding dwindles, we're very happy to kind of pick it up. And our two big events have been the comedy show, which we do in the winter, and then we also do the golf tournament, which this past weekend we raised over $8,000. We cleared over $8,000 in the golf tournament one day. Thank you, Manny Cabral. So yeah, so we are very active. We're losing a few members, and we're looking forward to eighth grade parents coming up to hopefully get some new blood in there, too. Thanks.
Is that it?
If I could just quickly thank all of you for agreeing to be put on the hot seat today. You know, the part of my evil plan here in making the suggestion was, A, to hopefully start something that we can renew each year, also to find a way to recognize all of you for the hard work you've done. You know, I've been a participant in some of these programs myself. I know it's a lot of work, and I can't thank you enough for getting involved in your children's schools, for forming those collaborations with their teachers, and with getting the communities together to get out some good programs for our kids. You know, it's much more than just academics, and you guys all proved it. Thank you so very much.
Yeah. Thank you. It's certainly gratifying to see the community support that really binds the schools together. Okay, so we are moving on to item 8D, Presentation on Initiative of Computer Science for Rhode Island and the Teals Program.
Yes, for the committees, for the purpose, what we're going to do is, I'd like Amy to give her overview regarding what we're currently doing regarding computer science throughout the district, and then we have some time for Mr. Rudolph and someone he's brought to speak about the Teal Initiative. So Amy, turn it to you.
Thank you so much. And please know, forgive me, I put quite a long memo in your packet with several attachments, and...
I'll keep it brief.
I will try and keep it brief, but I could talk all day about how wonderfully our teachers are doing in terms of addressing what they're learning about computer science and integrating it into everyday instruction. So as you may know, the Governor's Initiative on Computer Science, or hashtag CS4RI, was rolled out in March of last year, and the goal of that initiative is for every school in Rhode Island to teach computer science by January. Big goal, and we really are doing a great job, thanks to our many teachers, and poised to take leadership in this area. So last March, the Governor's Office on Innovation rolled out lists and lists and lists of free options for professional development for teachers across the state. And Tiverton worked to be strategic about how we moved ahead, trying to make sure we understood each of the initiatives by participating in webinars. I myself had several conference calls with members of the Governor's Office of Innovation, and I know that several of our administrators and teachers went to, I think some of our school committee also went to, events around computer science, 4RI and that rollout. And we had several meetings, particularly targeting our teachers who are already doing work in digital literacy, and our teachers who have taken on the role of innovative instructional leads. And again, our goal was to be strategic in terms of thinking about where computer science fit into things we were already doing and where there were natural opportunities to expand what we were doing, making sure that we selected the right training options. I have to say, none of this would have happened without teachers taking on the initiative and taking the lead. And it's a wonderful thing about Tiverton. So what I want to make sure you're aware of is where we are. The teachers invested their time, a lot of time, last summer after school and throughout the school year this year. And again, due to the grant we have from the Van Buren Charitable Foundation, those 10 innovative instructional leads really took a lead in moving us ahead. So right now, we have teacher-selected five programs that we're heavily involved in across all of our schools. The first one is, and I won't speak too long on this, I promise, because Mrs. Moore is going to speak about it, but the University of Rhode Island's Introduction to Computing and Data Science Course. Again, Ms. Moore is one of the leaders in the district and took the initiative to volunteer in their course last summer. As you know, that course has been rolled into the program of study for Tiverton High School next year, and she continues to get support from the community of practice. Teachers also doing that same work with her. There's two initiatives we're involved in at the K to five or K to six level. Each of the programs have their own grade span, but code.org has been one that teachers across our district have participated in. All of our elementary innovative instructional leads and many of their colleagues, K to four, have participated. And Ranger School will be hosting a code.org workshop early in June, on June 7th, and we have teachers from all of our elementaries and the middle school participating in that. An extension of that is the other item number three, which is the Innovative Computing Through Scratch, and that is available K to five. So that's happening this summer, and we do have teachers already signed up for that and very eager to participate. And then we have the two programs with which you're already familiar that are also now part of the CS4RI Initiative, the Design and Modeling Course, which of course, Mr. Zaro, who's here tonight, already is teaching. And we have the opportunity for other middle school teachers to participate in this training for free this summer. We do have people signed up. And finally, the new course that Dr. Dias Mitchell, Mr. Zaro, with your support, have already moved into the program of study, Apps Creator Training, where kids will be working with tablets. That's also available free this summer, and we have Tiverton teachers participating. So there's a lot more information. There are a lot of programs. I want to make sure that we're all proud of the fact that we have teachers who have jumped on board with this. And I put up a quote here from Ms. Abel, who we had invited to present tonight, but she's not available. She's out of state. The Director of Strategy for the Governor's Office of Innovation. Do you have to take a minute to read that quote?
Can we read it out loud? For people who are...
Tiverton, and again, this is right from the Governor's Office. It's one of only a handful of districts that is on track to have teachers involved at every grade span and at every school. And we're looking at your district and teachers as emerging leaders in this space and hope that you will continue to build demand and momentum for computer science education in Rhode Island through your example. So kudos again to the teacher leaders. I want to turn it over at this time to Ms. Moore so she can speak a little bit about her course.
Hi, good evening. I'm Judy Moore, Department Chair of Fine Arts and Careers here at the high school and also computer and business teacher. So the course, last year, once all the CS4RI came up, I decided after looking at all of the different options that we had, to go with the University of Rhode Island program. So I... This is the course description, and this is actually their course description also that they put in their program studies. This is basically the same course that they offer to a few of the URI students, the intro course. And they said we can... We have permission to use this, and this is in our program studies also. We just want to read that. The course is not just programming, but all computer science, and you'll see there's a large data component in this course. So the basic curriculum is that I will be teaching next school year, is it's broken down into a semester course, and you'll see the whole first half is based on data, and it's very structured. They... All the materials are provided for me at no cost. There was no hardware or software installation for us. It's all web-based, so we don't have... There was no cost at all to our school district. So this is just typical what my PD schedule... This is actually this year, but it's a copycat of last year's. So just a snapshot of what, you know, how I participated in this course. So the first one was meeting at URI, where they just gave us a brief overview, or brief three-hour overview of the course. And then they send you on your way, so you have X amount of time to June 26th to get so much work done. They estimate it takes about 10 hours. I feel like adding a zero to that number, but no, well, not in 10 hours for that timeframe. But anyways, you see, I'm not going to read the whole chart to you, but there's a lot of support from them, a lot of check-ins with them. They're on hand anytime. I had a student, they have students come down, their teacher assistants, and met with me about a week or two ago just to see where I was with the whole course. So that's that. So I completed the whole course and now prepared to teach it next school year. From here, the pathway is they also offer an AP course to follow this one. I'm hoping to take that initiative next summer and hopefully have it approved for a course of 18, 19 school year, to continue on this path and to make Tiverton really strong in the computer science field. How's the interest rate? In the course?
Yeah.
Oh, there were a lot... I'm going to say there were probably 20-ish...
Oh, good.
Teachers, 20, 20 to 20, you know, at all different grade levels, too. You know, I mean, a lot of middle school teachers, a lot of teachers, and this, as you'll see in a lot of the material, it's, they don't expect you to be a computer expert. You know, I do have a background in computers, but there are some people, they're scared to death because they have not taught it. So the fortunate thing were I didn't teach it this school year because it was already the program studies had already gone by. You know, I just missed the bus on that one. But it's good because when we go back for the check-in sessions, we're able to hear, we had teachers had concerns and made changes, and it's a really nice community. We have an online community support group, so it's been really well, really good, and I'm excited for it.
Thanks, Judy.
How's the interest rate from the students?
I have two full sessions next year. I think I have 30, 38, 39 students signed up.
Very good.
I just want to recognize Ms. Moore's incredible hard work over really the last year. You could see from last summer when I went to first meeting with Ms. Moore and asked her how her summer... She said, "Actually, quite busy." Studying this course in 12:30 or so. We appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Mr. Rudolph, if you'd like to come up and address the committee?
Hello, here's a recent someone we... Ms. Russo, she was...
We remember you.
Russo is the regional manager of the program, and she works with Octavia Adel, who's an able. And I'm here tonight to hopefully coincide with the program. I mentioned that there are some people scared to death to teach this because they lack expertise. And this is where the Teals Program comes in. And I first learned of this working at FM Global last year. Those who have been with, we are one of the world leaders in commercial property insurance, and we're headquartered in Rhode Island. Kind of a little bit, but here we are in Johnsons. And we have the largest research facility...
In Rhode Island, not being in the news is not a bad...
And it also has the largest research facility in the world, also based in Rhode Island. So with that said, we have roughly 400 people in our IS department, our IT department, a lot of them are developers, and quite a few of them have volunteered to be members of the Teal Program, of the Teal Program that I went about last year. One of the few of mine, called colleagues, a couple of them actually also live in Tiverton and one in Bristol, and they've been interested in participating in the Teal Program. A lot of the schools that are participating right now geographically are outside the state, which makes it very difficult for them to actually participate in the program that's all here. So hopefully with the support of the committee, we're able to go forward with this program a week, possibly for them at the CMTiverton, and have a lot of volunteers that live in town who also work at FM Global, who want to participate in this program, will also participate. With that said, some of the caliber of people that we have available to do resources to Ms. Moore and other teachers. One of my colleagues, who's a young woman, she's mid-20s, she's a software engineer, and that's actually sort of, sounds like a novelty that we need a woman and also a software engineer, which is a lot most men. So to have a young person, who's also a woman, come into a high school and is to see that's not just a man's profession, which has been for a long time. We usually don't see a lot of women in profession. It's actually great to see that also presented to a young woman in high school who might also be interested, or may not know they might be interested in it, as she started out. So it's a great opportunity to have that kind of experience also growing in the classroom and looking at teachers. So I'd further do like to turn it over to Ms. Russo. I know the slide deck was quite long. She's not going to have to do every single slide, but she does have shorter versions, and she can touch on, obviously, the high levels, maybe the points that would be issued to you, and she can answer any of your questions.
I have a bridge version, we got somewhere, so I can do elevator, green light version, or 15 or full hour. Your choice even, but just to keep you occupied while we're setting up, here's... I love the handouts. And I always have jelly beans that I don't want in my house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
She's setting up, do you want to direct the committee to that chart and then pack it? Does the side?
No, that's him.
Okay, so, hi, everybody. I can go remind you if that is better for sound quality. So what I do is I work very closely with Computer Science for Rhode Island, and I am also the Regional Manager for Teals. So some of the things I do for Computer Science for Rhode Island is I am the person organizing the end-of-year party for all of Rhode Island, the student showcase that's going on June 3rd at the Baker Fair, if you have students who'd like to have a showcase, as well as organizing the CS for Rhode Island Summit that was in December at URI. So on top of that, my other role with CS for Rhode Island is I'm the Regional Manager for Teals. And Teals is helping to build and grow sustainable computer science programs throughout high schools in the United States by pairing industry professionals with classroom teachers. So we are fully funded by Microsoft, so this really is an effort to give back to schools and also to get students to be ready for the next digital revolution and the understanding of the next form of literacy that they're going to encounter, which is computing. So some of the things we do is based on the teacher's content level knowledge, will depend on the amount of support they're getting from the industry professional, such as Jim. Here in Rhode Island, we have anchor companies that are supporting the schools, so we've worked with 30 different volunteers in the various high schools here in Rhode Island. They dedicated 7,000 hours to schools in Rhode Island last year alone. And that's just calculated time. So if anybody was spending extra time going above and beyond, which a lot of the volunteers did, you know, such as been really trying to help support your school, you know, we're not even tracking, we're not looking at those hours, so it is amazing the hard work they do for these schools. So some of the things, and I'm just going to kind of go back and forth, this is really, when you put it down to the nuts and bolts, this is a teacher professional development program. We're really there to help get the teacher geared up because learning computing is like learning a new language. And just like you won't ask an English teacher to go through a one-week professional development and then go teach AP French, we don't want to ask a classroom teacher to do one-week professional development and then teach AP computer science. There's a language barrier. And so this is where we have the industry professionals that are there. They are not content level experts in education, they don't have that pedagogy. So we need the classroom teacher there to really give them that strong content level knowledge, they're handling things like classroom management, but at the same time, the students are not only gaining expertise and learning from their teacher, but they're also learning from industry professionals. And so they have this reduced student-to-teacher ratio, so when they're doing things like creative thinking and problem solving, none of the students' code should look the same. And now you have more eyes and ears to help triage, unblock them, so that they can move on with their very unique code. As a teacher, as you can see from this graph, is gaining their content level knowledge, they teach more and more of the classes. So the volunteer will still step back, they'll still be there to help support the teacher. So if they're teaching something like recursion, which is one of the higher level, I don't know, is there any engineers in the room? No, okay. So it's a very high-level computer science topic that not all students can get, and sometimes it is probably the benchmark to know whether or not a teacher is able to teach independently on their own. So this is where you have the volunteer there to help support that teacher in learning that content and supporting the students, so you have an expert in the room teaching that content. So as we move down, you see, by year three, the teacher really can support the curriculum and learn it independently. It doesn't mean the volunteers disappear for them. We have a couple of different models, co-teaching model is the most support, there's also lab support. So for example, in URI AP CSP course, we are supporting lab support for '17, '18 is our pilot year, and this is, the teacher knows the content, they went through the PD, and at this point, the volunteers are just there for when they have difficult topics and they need just a friend to call, or they have someone in the room to help develop the student's code, or even if it's grading projects, they have someone there to help support them. As well as, again, that industry professional in the room, such as Aisling in the room, you know, this way they can see, oh, this is what an engineer looks like. It's not someone who's sitting in their current basement, it's, you know, a regular person. I get it all the time from my own child, that wow, this is engineers, these are real people, which I always find very interesting. So these are some of the different models and some of the different roles. So you'll see we have the volunteer team, co-teaching model, we have four volunteers supporting that one teacher. Not that all four volunteers are going into the class at the same time, they usually go in pairs, but life and work and travel and things happen, which is why we give you a pair. So this way they can mix and match who's going in on which days. And also, it's also allowing the students to see an array of what engineers look like and what engineers do. In lab support, it would be two volunteers going into the classroom, so those pairs of two, again, mix and match, and again, the students get an array of talking to and interacting with different engineers and really get to see what they do in their role. So the last thing we do, and I don't think this is really your choice, but I always find it really interesting to just let people know, is we also support remote model. And so in remote model, it's teleconferencing communication. So the volunteer is using Skype, for example, just because it's really accessible for us, and they're teaching the class. Again, the classroom teacher's in the room, the classroom teacher is there with educational pedagogy, the volunteer's there to help assist the students, give that one-to-one support. So I love to tell the story, one of our engineers, he traveled quite a bit in this year. So he was in Singapore, China, Switzerland, Abu Dhabi, and I think it was Paris. And rather than stopping to teach, he didn't want to leave his class alone, so he Skypes in with them from these other countries. It was about five minutes that he kind of shows them, okay, this is what Singapore looks like, this is the skyline, and then it was back to business as usual. Which, what a remarkable experience for students, that they're not only getting to see what telecommunications can do to make a world smaller, but really, this is the world of an engineer as well, is that it doesn't matter where in the world you are, you can connect with anybody, and he's still supporting the class as well, you know, those five-minute distractions, and then students get back to doing their work. So who are our Teals volunteers? So again, this is a national program. We are supporting for '17, '18 over 400 different schools throughout the United States. We are working with over 1,000 different volunteers. They are from 280 different organizations. We are program agnostic, so after Microsoft, our second number-one source of volunteers is Google. Here in Rhode Island, we have strong support from FM Global, Amica, Citizens from Senadia, they're a huge aspect for our CS Summit. We also have support from LifeSpan. So it is showing the students computing isn't just this very technical thing, well, it is a technical thing, but it's not just this iconic thing that we see in your doctor programmer for this company, you can be in healthcare, you can be in music, you can be in security, you can be in insurance, and no matter what, you're still going to have to know this skill. So at this point, and this is where I'm going to put a little carrot in here, so at this point, we've stopped accepting applications from schools for the '17, '18 school year, but for Tiverton, you guys, and the number one reason is volunteers. I have to recruit these volunteers, I have to vet them to make sure they are okay to be in a room with students via having interviews as well as having ECI checks, and that takes time. At this moment, you guys already have people who want to support your classroom, they're ready to support your classroom, which is why, you know, we can sit here today, and if you wanted to move forward for this school year, you have people who are ready to support your classrooms, which is an amazing place for you to be in. And I kind of want to put that because you'll see February is usually when that went down. So do you guys have any specific questions for me about CS for Rhode Island in general, Teals, or any of the other little on the office?
How do the volunteers get into the classroom? I mean, are there other job sites letting them leave? I mean, because if you're talking about rotating schedules, you're talking about schedules that are different from one day to the next, are the employers letting them go at any time during the day?
So most often, most of our schools meet first period. And so the volunteers will go into the classroom, and we say, you know, volunteer and keep your day job, so they can go volunteer in the morning and then go into work to start their day. In some instances, we have volunteers who work from home, or they work remotely, or, you know, so, or they go during their lunch break. So for instance, in Central Falls, they have a rotating block schedule, so we have volunteers who are going, some just in mornings, so they only go to the classroom in the morning, and then other volunteers who work for themselves, so then they can just go whenever, and then we have volunteers who goes during his lunch hour.
Dan, question?
What other Rhode Island districts are doing this?
So next school year, we are going to be working with Smithfield High School, Central Falls High School, North Providence, working with Paul Cuffy, Village Green Virtual, Pilgrim, Tolgate, Coventry, and I'm probably missing someone.
Okay, thank you.
Holly? So how many hours would a volunteer typically be present to the class or over the course of, you know, a school year or semester?
So each volunteer is dedicating 280 hours in the year towards your school.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And that's why I say, you know, 7,000 hours in the state amongst those 30 volunteers, and that's things that we track. So for instance, we're looking at things such as summer training, they go through 20 hours of summer training, the volunteers, to ensure they're ready to go into a classroom and track them, the students. We do monthly meetups, we have the hour that they're in the classroom, and then for every hour that they're in the classroom, we estimate another hour that they're spending prepping or grading for students. We incorporate the commute time that they're giving going to and fro the school as well as, you know, team collaboration, because this is a team, so they need to know if Jimmy is way ahead on the project and you have to give him something extra, and, you know, Bobby, he was struggling and you have to spend a little bit more time explaining moves to him. So, you know, having a team collaboration is very vital in this, and we estimate that time as well, within that 280 hours.
Okay. You alluded a little bit to sort of vetting the volunteers. Can you tell me a little bit more about that process?
Sure. I am in the process of volunteer interviews currently, so I meet with each volunteer for about, first they have to apply with Teals, and it is a fairly rigorous application, it's about four pages long, they do need to submit their CV, that as well as answer a number of questions, not only on their amount of computing knowledge, but also on working with students in the past. And so after reading through those applications, you know, if there's something that strikes me, I will obviously ask them about it, but mostly I'm asking things like, you know, why do you want to do this? So make sure it's for the right reasons, because 280 hours, you have to have a compelling reason to want to volunteer your time.
That's not a lot of time.
And what's a common answer to that question?
A lot of times, they want to give back. So, or, I wanted to be a teacher, that's another really big one. You know, I want to give to my community, I feel like I'm not doing enough good, or I really wanted to go into teaching, but it's more lucrative to be an engineer. Another big one is the interaction. So a lot of times, if you are a programmer, you are kind of in isolation. So in our Cambridge office, I have one of our volunteers who is absolutely amazing, she is a, I probably have her exact site wrong, she's working on developing lithium ion batteries for cell phones through the MIT lab. So she works very heavily in very secure locations, and so she, I mean, she loves teaching, but one of the reasons is she's like, I need to interact with people, which, yeah.
Give her some sunshine.
Yeah, so, I mean, and she's fabulous, she's absolutely amazing and brilliant, but, you know, she wants to give back. Some of the things is, you know, I do ask them a question on computer science because that's what they're expert in, so they need to be able to explain to me a concept if I'm a high school student. So this is a great way to see if, you know, they're way up here, can they bring their vocabulary down to a level that's attainable for a high school student?
Sure.
Again, what is their experience working with high school students, as well as collaboration? You know, how do they work in a team? And then what are their preferences? Because again, they're giving their time, so I want to ensure that I put them in a classroom that's meeting the school they want to work in as well as the curriculum.
Okay. You mentioned offhand, I think, that they do get ECI checked, it's, okay, all right. What do you find predicts success when the program goes into a school?
So the district level support as well as the enthusiasm and engagement of the classroom teacher. So I've seen very, very, very successful programs when the teacher is fully engaged and they really want to do this, and, you know, they want to learn the content and really give back to their school and, you know, create something within their district, and those are often the best situations for us. You know, I love the fact that you're saying that, that you don't want to just start here, that you're actually even looking forward to doing the AP class, and to me, that shows a very engaged teacher. On the other hand, I've had schools that I didn't accept into our program because the teacher that they used to apply didn't want, didn't appear to want the course, or even sometimes even told me specifically, I was voluntold for this and I'm not really interested.
So you've interviewed people here already to accept us?
Not your school in general, I'm saying in previous experience, what makes your reach?
No, but there are some people who are interested specifically in Tiverton, I think you did say that.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Volunteers, yeah. Yeah, so I have, I have volunteers who are very interested.
Is the curriculum the same as the URI curriculum? That your Teals?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, like, what's the dub scale between this and the CS for Rhode Island?
Exactly, that's, that's.
So, yeah, we, CS for Rhode Island is, we have a pathway. So we all work very closely with each other, we have weekly calls, all of the different providers for CS for Rhode Island, so I speak with URI staff routinely, the lady you were talking about, Martha, I am collaborating with her as well to do some curriculum development with them, they talk to our curriculum team. So our intro class is more of a gamification, they're using block-based programming language to learn the concepts without syntax. URI's, the first semester is in data analytics, and then both of our second semesters of the intro are in Python. AP CSP, we support their curriculum fully with our lab support model. APCSA is our curriculum, so our intro curriculum is based out of the University of Berkeley's Joy and Beauty of Computing for the intro, and the University of Washington's CS 142, 143 class. Our APCSA has dual enrollment with URI, and then we are also working to pilot a CS Discoveries course with URI for the middle school piece with Co. Org's CS Discoveries curriculum.
Okay. So I guess to bring that down a little bit for a more basic question, what I would not want to do, or what I'd be concerned about, or a concern I think that would be raised is duplicating versus augmenting effort or contradicting effort. So that is something that can be articulated with the CS for RI.
Yeah, so we're, we are halfway, and we are all working in conjunction with each other and collaborating.
Okay.
I'll ask the question more directly. Will you be able to support our teacher doing what we're already doing?
Yes.
And that would be through the lab support? And that would be through the lab support model or the classroom enrichment model?
Yes.
I think that was most of my questions, or all of my questions. Elaine, anything else? Diane? Did Amy or Ms. Moore, did you have any questions you wanted? Would you care to comment or have any questions?
You were touching on it, so just to clarify, so I do not have to bring in that SNAP program? Just ride with mine?
So the intro to CS, SNAP is our intro. And if I had a pathway in my head, the way I would do it is, if you are doing Scratch already at the middle school level, you don't need to do our intro course. So you could do, you have Scratch and then the middle school level, then you have the intro data analytics with URI, then you have the Python, which we are fully have, we can use their curriculum, we have some Python curriculum, and then it would be the APCSP and the APCSA. Just to have the full.
I think Mr. Ashley may want to speak.
Well, I, I just sounds like we're not quite there.
So I do appreciate from you learning about this. I guess kind of what I'm just thinking about is I want to support the work that Ms. Moore's already putting, and knowing that she's already, I think, pretty well handled on the next year. It's still kind of involved, you know, we really want to support her. It's tough right now, because she hasn't started teaching a class yet, I think, too. So it's a little bit tricky to say, you know, we need help here. And so, while, I always love the idea of outside professionals who need to support our teachers, too. We just want to make sure that we give Ms. Moore the capacity and time.
So you think they can get through a year and then maybe look for 18, 19?
Potentially.
Well, one of the things I'd also like to look at is how it works in other districts in Rhode Island, and talk to them, go do site visits, because Judy's been gearing up, she took a whole year to gear up for what we want to do next year. And I, I mean, I personally would want to say to her, okay, now you got to go do something else or learn another part of a new curriculum for September. And I would prefer that we, you know, take next year to take a look at this and spend time working with, speaking to the folks from TEALS to see how it could be integrated. Because right now, we're towards the end of the school year, and it's not a whole lot of time.
One of my concerns, when it was mentioned, Bill, was having a schedule where this would take priority for scheduling, because we're so, because we're so focused on those Level 3 courses, you know, getting rid of those Level 3 courses and making sure that our curriculum supports that, I would be hesitant to add another, I mean, we all know how hard the scheduling is, I would be a little hesitant until we know exactly how that's worked to add another scheduling wrinkle that, okay, this is going to be first period. Because we do have some real scheduling things that we, challenges that we have asked you guys to really address for the year. So.
Well, I'm not sure that that's a given, that it has to be first period. I think that's, that was just one of the examples.
That was just one of the examples.
I also think, and I don't want to put the teacher on the spot, but we haven't even discussed with the teacher about having people come into our classroom.
That's fair.
And those are all questions that have to be asked and answered before we go down this direction with any kind of partnership.
I too would like to say that. I don't want to take away from the hard work that any teacher do. I was a teacher in the past, so this is not a means to take away from the professional development that Ms. Moore's already done. This is a means to help support her and to support the students. And I really just hope that that is very clear, because that is my major goal here, is to ensure that she has the capacity.
I guess that was my question. So you forgot with the volunteers, but you haven't met with the principal or the teacher?
So the volunteers came to me that they wanted to support their school.
Got it, okay. So, and I guess that would be the next question.
This is not the usual process.
Right, 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 right.
That this way, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
This is kind of a backwards design, which is fabulous, that you have such a rich community that they really would like to support you.
Right. So it would seem to me, if there's people that are interested in this, that the next step would be, I guess the question would be, so how does TEALS get grafted? If we're going to pursue this, how does TEALS get grafted onto what we're already doing?
Well, I think we have to look, like you said, we have to see what we're doing next year, and then look at it again, I think. Like, once Judy gets a good sense of what the class is, is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, I want to be clear that I think, you know, any kind of outside support that we can latch on to and work with is something we need to pursue. I just think we need time to look into it and see how, as Jerry mentioned, how it would graph, if at all. It sounds like there's pieces of it that would. But we need to, you know, the teacher needs the time to teach the class first, and then we evaluate where we are, and then, at the same time, have conversations with these folks to see how they can support us.
And which model would work?
And which one would work best, because I don't know. And that's why I said I'd like to also see the program in operation somewhere else, so we can pick the brains of other people of other districts that are doing it.
Yeah. So Mr. Zara, please come up. I mean, you probably have to come up to the podium, sorry.
I know you were saying you're interested in engaging middle school support as well. I know from my perspective, we would be, personally, I'd be interested in looking at it. I don't want to step on the high school's toes, but at whatever point in the rotation, you'd be ready to introduce that. You have an emphasis, Barney, on?
Dr. Larkin?
Yes.
If I may. Mr. Stone and Ms. Moreau actually had a wonderful conference call a few weeks back, talking about opportunities. And without putting the cart before the horse, there were some really interesting just conceptual conversations that we had around computer science courses, but also other courses in which computer science can be integrated. So I think there's work to be done in-house at the high school with the support of all, of the central office around our pathways and around how we best integrate things. We're a small school, so adding courses isn't always an option with us. And I think there's some really interesting ideas. I had suggested perhaps having some of our teachers from other areas visit, and you shared that you were piling, you know, other subject areas in other states. So there are definitely opportunities, and this is an amazing source for support as we get to that place.
Program was graphic design? Is that correct?
Yeah, we did talk about graphic design, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I'm trying to clarify what, exactly what I'm hearing. You don't think that there's an opportunity for us to engage now?
I don't, I would like this, I would like us to have the time to do what we've planned and implement it, and in the same time, have parallel conversations over the course of the upcoming year with the TEAL folks to see how we can, a year from now, roll them into what we do, if at all. I would assume we can, based on what I'm hearing.
I would also add that a year ago, when that first Matrix came out, they're parallel paths, and that's how many of the folks in my role and folks at the Department of Ed, even in conversations, it looks like the design, you know, just that it was a column, and it looked like you had to choose A or B. So we went very heavy, and Judy gets all the credit for all the work that she's done, down a path. And I feel like we should, we should take that path and then circle back and see where it leads us and what other support we can.
Yeah, again, I think, if we can leave it, just leave it open to ongoing conversation.
Absolutely.
At least from my own perspective, too, just needing a little bit of time.
Yeah.
And I think other schools potentially are an opportunity to get, so I certainly don't want to close the outstanding, just continue the conversation.
And I do want to say, just because this was part of your presentation as well, I have no idea the amount of things that we, I mean, this is so new since my son left, and he's only been gone a few years, so this is quite possible that, I mean, I had no idea until we had the presentation, what kind of things we were doing. So kudos to our administration, our teachers.
To give a little stat on that, so at the start of CS for Rhode Island, there was only nine high schools within the state that was actually doing, including. And since our efforts, we are up to 88 school, percent of schools throughout Rhode Island having CS courses for this school year. So in one year, that is how much work we've done. And I will say "we" because I am part of the larger CS for RI umbrella, and I can tell you, it has been a lot of work. And it's been very fun and engaging. So thank you guys for all of that hard work to make it easier to get that ramp up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I feel we, that this is an opportunity. Maybe it's an opportunity that won't be actualized in the, you know, in the way that we hope it, won't, won't actually be fulfilled in the way we hope it might be based on kind of what we're hearing tonight. But it would seem to me that we should continue to have a conversations, and really in the short term, not, not just, you know, let's see where we are in a year, but rather.
They'd be ongoing.
You know, and involve Mr. Zara, Ms. Moore, Amy, the principals, to really talk about. And I guess, you know, if we have people who are interested in this and coming to volunteer, you know, in that conversation with them, hearing what they're doing, you know, you can then tell us, or tell them, what you think you have to offer in terms of the volunteers. So I'm not a, I don't feel like we should be wedded to a specific time course, but rather, you know, continue this dialogue where you guys learn a little bit more about us and we learn a little bit more about you, and we see exactly what the opportunity is. Now, is there a, and I guess that's the crux of the matter in a way, is there some deadline or, you know, point at which the opportunity would no longer be there, or? Right.
So at least, I can honestly tell you that we have actually closed our school applications.
Right.
So I'm here because there's volunteers who want to work with you guys. And so this is, again, this is not a normal situation for me.
Right, 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 no, I understand, yeah, yeah. That's what makes it.
I completely understand that schedules are set, and teachers have their courses already in mind, and now it's the students, and to terminate, and dot, dot, dot in scheduling. Now, for 1819, our applications will open up in November, and they close in around April, literally around April vacation. Volunteers, and that's honestly my largest concern, is the fact that you do have people who are ready now and are able now to volunteer towards your school. And my only fear is, you know, hopefully they'll still be able and willing to volunteer in the 1819 school year. Currently, CS for Rhode Island is covered, all of the costs, so it doesn't cost your school anything. And hopefully, again, those funds will all still be readily accessible.
Right.
Those are the little, you know, nitty gritty concerns.
So, yeah, timing is everything. And.
I think most importantly, it's incumbent upon us to do our due diligence, too. I, you know, coming from business, we never undertake large decisions in a one-hour meeting. There's always a length of time where discussions take place, research is done. I think Mr. Eric's idea of seeing how we're doing, other school districts are employing this model, I think is all great, and I would definitely want us to continue that conversation. But to actually make a commitment to something like this for the next school year tonight, I don't think it's responsible.
There hasn't been any motion for a vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we should.
You just need to be sure that we continue the conversation.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. So. Yeah, sure.
From the same invitation you saw.
Right, right.
And I did learn about this the previous year, and I remember mentioning it in the previous meeting when I was on, last year.
Yep.
It was my fault not pursuing it any further. So when I did see the presentation by Ms. Russo at then in March, and then real, and then had a conversation with Octavia personally on the same day, what the timeframe was for applying for a school, I was like, we have to try and get this on the, so we can get the discussions going. I was hopefully getting, be able to get some support this evening, since it's not just myself, there's quite a few other individuals who came actually to me, because I knew my involvement in this group in the past, to try and to help them facilitate this conversation tonight. So at least something was accomplished, I guess, in that sense.
Okay.
I guess I am a little disappointed, I'll break the news to some of the other volunteers that it may be no doubt for next year.
Well, I think we have to figure out where we are as a district and what the program can actually offer us. And that's actually what.
It's really the point I was trying to make.
Okay. Okay. So I guess I would encourage, you know, everyone to continue the conversation, Ms. Moore, Mr. Zara, Amy, and the principals to sort of figure out where we are and what can be offered. Okay?
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Yes, here I am. Sorry I'm late, everyone, I had a very important family function tonight. But these things are so important to me that I dismissed myself from the big mani, almost fell off the gangplank, but I'm still here. It's easy going up, not so good coming down. I know I missed much of the conversation, but I can see that you're going to think about it. And guess what? Our kids can't wait. So we have a national company, FM Global, who was just named one of the best companies to work for in the, in the country. And we've been doing computer science for Rhode Island all year. We went to the kickoff, we've been talking about it. Things are coming to different districts. Different districts are doing them, and we're not. And I know we're doing a lot. We are, I'm really happy about that. But we have volunteers that want to help us now. And now is when the kids have to have it. Not a year from now, all those kids will have missed out. And I understand it's very complicated, there's lots of layers. I go on all the webinars with Ride, and I listen to them, and I think everyone else does. And this high school and these students can't miss out on one more minute, because when I go, when we go to the other districts and the other meetings, you go to the state with us, and everybody is just picking up, jumping on the train, and it's leaving without us. And it's our responsibility, and I know we have to fit everything in, and I know we have to look at things. But in education, sometimes you have to jump on and grab hold of it and just say, it's a heck of a ride, and here we go. And we'll be one of the first in East Bay to have this. Let's be first with something. We've gone with Anne Bjorn before, we've taken a chance, they've helped us. We've done so many things when we weren't sure, we was putting our toe in the water. We left Tiverton, we said, here we are, we want what everyone else has. Our kids deserve what everyone else has. And we've taken the chance with Project Lead the Way, and look what happened. We didn't really know about that. Deb was here, and Carol, and we all read the things, and we're like, we really don't know what that is, no one ever did it before. We're not going to wait and look what someone else does, no. We're the Tiverton Tigers, and here is raw. And let's get going and pick on to these things and jump on the train. And I see the guidance counselor shaking her head, she knows what I'm talking about. My six kids just went here, they graduated from here. My son just got Maritime Man of the Year. It's amazing. It's not just Rhode Island, and it was just what a moment. My uncle had gotten it, my husband got it, and now he got it, and the whole family was here. That's what Tiverton High School does. It sets you out, and it teaches you to go and grab for everything you can. So I know I came in late, but I've been going over the packet. I've talked to Mr. Ruda, I've gone to all, you know, CS for Rhode Island. I went to the kickoff. The governor was sitting on the stage with Steve Jobs's wife and all these people, and I said, oh, this one's connected. I don't care if we like somebody or not, we're jumping on that, we're getting everything she has to offer, and she's trying to offer it to us. So I understand Amy's and Mr. Eric, and you can all work on this. I know you can get it done. So I know how the rest of you might feel, but I just had to rush here and let you know. Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
Let me just add.
Let me just add, though, because you did miss Ms. Moore's presentation and Ms. Donley Roche's presentation, that I, my comment was, we actually aren't being left behind. I am super impressed-
Oh, I am too.
-with all of the things that we're doing. We had the head of Ride who commended us because we really are moving. And I, you know, my comment was, you know, my son's only been gone a few years, and the pace and the things that we have thoughtfully put in place. Project Lead the Way was very thoughtful. We didn't just put it in the middle school and the high school, and we didn't, we didn't have everything. We put it one piece-
No, we went, no.
And then we did a second piece and third piece. And I think that's what we're think, that's what we're talking about here. Not that we don't want it, it's just, let's have a conversation about what we're doing, what they're doing, get the, loop in the principals, loop in the administration, loop in the teachers. Because it's great to have volunteers, but you have to have the administration on board, too.
Of course, of course you do.
So if we can loop everybody in, this is going to be something that, you know, I think, you know, like we were saying, that it's, it's definite, you know, definite possibilities down the road, but, you know, it needs to be thoughtful, and it needs to be a conversation. And like I said, when I heard what Mrs. Moore has done, and what we have been doing in as a district, I wasn't aware, and I'm really, really surprised, and very appreciative of how quickly we have moved with so much of these things. It amazes me what we have compared to when my son was here just three years ago. So-
It is true. And so Project Lead the Way, I was in a consignment shop, and someone came up to me and said, "Sally, you taught at D'Arif, you're right?" I said, "Yes, I did." And they said, "Well, my son's there, and there's this amazing program. You've got to get it for Tiverton." And all her kids went here to Project Lead the Way. We brought it back to Mr. Rarick. Linda Lawson and I went to WPI with Zach Fenster, we had him trained. Okay, right off the bat, we went, he left for another district, so we got another teacher trained. And all those trainings, and everything's come from grants. None of that's come from Tiverton School Department money or taxpayers' money. All that's been from grants written by Linda Lawson, Amy Donley Roche, and all these, the work is amazing. But we have to continue. We have someone in front of us that's volunteering for this year, and another person from our town. So that's all I'm saying. I understand what you mean, Mrs. Palas, definitely. But that's how Project Lead the Way came, and we just kept pounding at it. You had to have the three-course sequence, you have to go to Ride, you have to get it. It's not easy. You have to get it all certified. We've got Carpentry's on its way also. They're doing very well with that, but we're not quite there yet. But it's all a matter of these teachers, and we thank them for taking time away from their families, going during the summer. My husband did that, and it's really hard to be alone in the summer with your kids, but I do, I thank all the teachers still. So thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zaro?
Jay Zaro from the middle school. Where we're bringing in the second ELPW class for the eighth grade, which would be the computer app, which was the old MIT app creator. Even if we took the concept of field testing this program out of the middle school, where we have a double track now of the design and modeling students leaving eighth grade and feeding into gym couches program, and the computer app feeding into Judy Moore's class, it would kind of generate more bodies coming out of the middle school into that high school program. And if we were able to work with them on a field test trial basis, just to kind of see what the program is, it would give you guys a better clarity for the following year for the program as well. I would be willing to do it. We also have a second teacher yet to be hired that would be coming in for it, so we would actually have two people in a partner. Right now, we're basically a one-minute show, so I would welcome any help.
Okay. And that's, I guess, all I'm asking, is that we continue this conversation, we determine what the opportunity is, and how best it is to implement it in the district as a whole. And very much appreciate your coming out and talking to us, and being willing to help work. Yeah, sure.
So, national picture, Teal's, just for one of your points about us. So, there are fifty thousand, which was an increase of ten thousand ABCSA courses taken twenty fifteen and then twenty sixteen. Fifty percent of those exams taken were Teal students, and of those fifty percent, we were a ten percent higher average on the ABCSA exams than the national average of students. We had two times more students of diversity, and three times more females. And so, you know, this isn't, and we support Project Lead the Way for their APCS principals course in several different states. And I know this is, I fully get it, it's just more of, just like, this is, we are something that is nationally recognized, supported by Microsoft philanthropies. So we are a national program. Just to make sure that that was clear.
All right. Thank you.
If it would help, I do have to reach out to the side of the school.
Yeah. I think, you know, I guess, I'm not going to tell you how to do it, but the way I would envision is Amy, the principals, and the teachers get together with you guys and decide what you can do. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Where are we?
Budget.
Budget.
Old business.
Budget, old business. Take it away.
Thank you.
Yeah, thankfully, this jelly bean's, it's been a long one. No, I'm good. Thank you. I'm just trying to find my tabs. As you know, for our budget, because of the issue with only one referendum question, the school department had to make up the difference of two hundred and forty-eight thousand four ninety-nine-
Yep.
...dollars. We had, as I said before at our last meeting, that we were going to have conversations with the region, regional special ed, to see if we were going to be able to save any dollars as far as staffing issues went. And as it turned out, we received the audit data for the first year from the region that Portsmouth wasn't with us. And we have some good news to report, that we have a surplus of two hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That is our percentage of the surplus for the region.
Being the special ed-
Special ed.
-had a surplus.
Yeah, special ed had the surplus. And again, when we did the budget for that year, we did a straight reduction in calculation. Portsmouth was about thirty-eight percent of the budget. We told the business manager for the region, cut the budget right across the board by that amount. Even with doing that, we ended up with a surplus at the region. I'm recommending that the committee use those funds plus funds that we will save from a teacher who will not be renewed, and that gets us to the desired amount.
So the special, Newport County Regional Special Ed, I guess, yes, the board has already voted, Bill, to release this in the district?
Yes. Yes, we directed it to be released to all three districts, to be used as they see fit. I don't know how the other two districts are going to use it.
So, right, so other districts may be adding programs, but we're going to try to save on-
That's what I would recommend. And by doing it this way, we believe for these eights, I want to get my years right, for seventeen, eighteen, for next year's budget, we've directed the region to reduce their budget even further, so that a year from now, we won't have a two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar issue. It should be closer to about a hundred thousand dollar debt makeup that we have to have for deficit, for deficit spending.
So you asked them to budget the savings that they're seeing, and make sure they budget-
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah.
Is there any precedence for this?
No. No, no.
For what? There being a surplus in special ed?
Of the size of special ed.
No, there's been small ones of maybe fifty thousand.
Because this is just our portion.
This is just our portion. It was, we were, believe me, we were surprised, because we did everything to reduce the budget accordingly. And-
And they've never agreed to release any either.
No, that's what's unprecedented in the past. I mean, they've had modest surplus and deficits over their existence, but because of the magnitude of this, I mean, it exceeded, you know, any year or combination of years prior to this. They're not in the business to, you know, overcharge us, basically. So it definitely got our attention, and we've had further discussions with them, because it really wasn't made, we weren't made aware of it during the year, fiscal year sixteen, that they were, that they were running this favorably. So we're doing what we can to avoid that in this current year, and especially for eighteen, that we have a lot more ability to control what's going into their budget.
How would they not know that they were running favorably? Do they have like timing issues like we have, principals come in and they-
I think primarily, it was, the unknown of running that first full year without Portsmouth being in the region, there was a lot of uncertainty, and they weren't sure if they were going to get hit at the end of the year with certain expenses, or-
So they may have known they were running favorably, but they-
They were fearful of reduce, or disclosing that to us, and in our partner communities. And also, in addition to the two hundred and forty-eight thousand four ninety-nine, we also had another forty-two thousand intuitions that were projecting to Rogers. So by using the surplus from the region, plus the savings from the non-renewal, it gets us to the amount that we need to cover.
Do you have that number?
Yes, it's in your, that's in, that's under eight A.
If I might give my brief recap.
Sure.
Part of this is a function of, we're putting together the budget in December and January, and there's always things that come up in the five or six months, you know, after we put it together. And this is one of those items, you know, SPED closed out the year, had their audit, you know, during the beginning of the calendar year when we're working on our budget. We become aware of something like this in May, when Mr. Rarick went to the, to the board meeting. And fortunately, we happen to be looking for two hundred and ninety-three thousand as a result of the Financial Town referendum. This obviously allowed us to put a proposal together and not affect programming, which was one of our goals. So, in the summary I put in the package, I'll briefly run through the numbers. We were looking for two hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars as a result of our budget request not being adopted, and the cuts being made to the FTR. The first item that we're proposing be reduced is one we talked about over the last few weeks, is the school lunch subsidy of forty-five thousand has been removed as a one-time recommendation because we have been running favorable in the school lunch fund. The second item is this fiscal year sixteen, SPED regional surplus of two sixty-five, six twenty-eight. And generally, I mean, that could be construed as a one-time revenue, which we're never fond of building our budget up with. But what I'm recommending is each year, we check in with SPED, see if they're running a surplus, and potentially use those funds to reduce our future year's request. Third item that Mr. Rarick mentioned is, last meeting, we said that there were six new students attending Rogers that we weren't previously aware of when we put the budget together. We're, based on our historical run rate with those students, about half those number actually complete the year. So we're recommending tuition of forty-two thousand to be added into our budget. And finally, the two-fifth social studies teacher at the high school, that due to class demand and enrollment, wouldn't be necessary, saves us twenty-three thousand seventy dollars, which brings us within eighteen hundred of our target that the FTR set our budget as.
And then what is this about supplies and textbooks?
Previously, the committee had meant, we had brought forward a few recommendations that the committee opted not to move on, and I just put those on there as a reference item.
Because based on our last conversation, and even though it wasn't voted on, we got the impression that we didn't, the wish of the committee was not to have to cut programming and/or people.
Mm-hmm.
So those two items obviously aren't either. They're not personnel, and they're not programming. I mean, they do impact them, but we put, you know, we had them there as, you know, a possibility to consider.
Yeah, I mean, our intent was to present to the committee some options and recommendations, and that's what we've done.
Okay.
So did it come out of the fund balance?
The eighteen hundred, yes. I've actually-
We adjusted another line item, so.
I mean, eighteen hundred dollars or thirty million.
But you're cutting a high school teacher?
The teacher is being reduced because the need isn't there. Staffing. It's a two-fifths.
Two-fifths. Yes. So, and I just might comment, on this chart, red is good and black is bad?
The red is a cut, yes, yes.
You're not supposed to do-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I finally got it straight the first time, and now you're really accusing me.
Negative is good.
In this case.
Negative is bad.
So, not really a question for this discussion, but I remain concerned about savings, which we keep on realizing out of special education, and I think that's going to come back to haunt us.
Well, we're, and on a side note, we are currently, we just got interviewed, Amy and I and Doug, the past two days, by the folks doing the outside audit, the program audit. So, we, again, from what they're telling us, we should have a preliminary report by the end of next month.
Are they meeting with any parents?
I'm not sure. I would like to think they would be meeting with the support group that the region has, that they speak to them.
Their task was whether it was efficient to-
Right.
Their task was to see if they can achieve efficiencies by doing a program audit-
Right.
-of the region, whatever that might entail. A different funding formula.
Slip or run state-
Right, that will, those-
I'm not sure quality was a-
No, but quality is, though-
Actually, most of the questions were about quality.
Those were questions that were asked.
I think we've all been interviewed, and that came up.
I mean, and I will speak to the principals, but that was asked quite a bit about program quality. I mean, in our interviews.
In the context of, is what we're paying equivalent to the level of quality we're receiving, or are we paying less and getting more qual- they're evaluating the entire spectrum of what we're providing.
All right, so I see five nodding heads down there. Quality was, maybe four nodding heads. Manny, can you nod your head? Or do you not want to nod your head?
Were you asked about-
You don't have to.
Not that it is quality, did they ask about quality.
Would you like to use your voice rather than nod your head?
I was interviewed, as well as other people at Ranger. We've seen drastic changes in the way we deliver special ed services that we haven't been happy with, but the numbers are dropping. So some of it was brought about because there were less students that were becoming qualified for special ed.
Did you express, though, your concerns?
Oh, I did.
Oh, I'm sure you did.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider, I wouldn't consider this reduction a proposed cut of anything we're looking to do. It basically is a reflection of what's been done.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, though-
Well, they didn't know what the savings were going to be.
Water is under the bridge, so we're-
And we have the ability to adjust going forward, too.
Right.
And again, we've talked about this before, and again, we, the special ed well is going to go dry. I mean, this was, we were, we were taken aback by, it was good news, but we were surprised, the three superintendents.
Right.
A year from now, or sooner, we're going to be faced with a dollar, I would assume a dollar more for a budget, unless something changes rapidly with the charter review and everything else. We're going to have at least one more tough year of budgeting under our current system of governance. And we won't have, I don't believe we'll have any more rabbits to pull out of our ass.
Well, as we saw last year, this could just have easily went the other way because we had the big bust in progress.
Right. Had, had we not done this, had we not gotten this good news, we'd be struggling not to look at programs and/or people, because we simply couldn't make up that kind of money.
Well, that was our alternative until we got this news from SPED.
We're good at what we do, but we're not, we're not that good.
Well, and Doug said, too, that's part of the problem, your budget, a thirty million dollar budget in January fifteenth, which is six months before your, beginning of your school year, eighteen months before your-
Quite a bit can change.
I mean, that's-
And keep in mind, based on our past go-round, whatever we submit on January fifteenth is the number.
Yep.
Right.
So we have to, we don't even have that latitude really anymore, unless the budget committee agreed with us and, you know, on a lower number. But I don't foresee that in the foreseeable future.
So, two years ago, we were unlucky. This year, we're lucky. But luck is a heck of a way to run a railroad. Okay.
I do want to point out also, though, for the rest of the committee's benefit, is that Ms. Palas and I met with Mr. Rarick, Mr. Fiore, about a week ago, to go through some of the numbers, some of the ideas that we may be able to work with them collaboratively at looking at some of the expenses, and finding ways to do things more efficiently. And I would love to have us continue those meetings on a regular basis. Like, you know, clearly, this does appear to be the right answer for this year, but it doesn't mean that we can let our guard down. We fully know what's coming at us next year.
Right. And one of the things that we discussed at that meeting was to have a workshop, a school committee workshop with all of us.
Yes, yes.
And basically, alls we were doing were spitballing ideas, and came up, I think, with some good ones. So I'm sure by adding three more members to the conversation-
Maybe we can put that on the agenda for next time, is to discuss, you know, discuss establish a finance subcommittee and/or workshop.
As an agenda item, sure.
Because I think we're getting, yes, Mrs. Black?
Mr. Rarick?
Yes.
The YTI, the Response to Intervention, we just want to know, everybody's getting their services. That's the important-
That's the important thing. You know what I mean?
RTI is not impacted by this.
No, but I mean, that's what helped us to identify the kids, and...
Yes, and that's why we have fewer students...
So we want everyone to know they're getting their services.
Now, RTI is an ongoing process, as far as trying to improve it, and through the whole...
But it's a wonderful program.
Right, no, but you're correct. That's in all five schools, and we continue working on that constantly, to try to make it more efficient and more effective.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need a vote to recommend that...
To take this action.
To take this action.
And then will we send the corrective action plan to the president of the town council within those number of days?
We don't need one.
A what?
No, we'll be all set.
We're balanced.
Oh, okay, that way...
No, because we are balanced.
You don't have to do it when you're balanced, okay? They don't have to know how we balanced it?
No.
Okay.
I thought you were suggesting we correct them.
No, 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 we wouldn't do that.
I was going to say, I don't think that would go over very well.
We had to do that once, we sent one to Mr. Bowlen, remember, Mr. Eric?
Yes, we did.
Make a motion to adopt the budget as presented?
Do you have a second?
For this full year, 2000. And this is what it would look like, that's what Doug just handed out.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any comment from the audience? All those in favor? All those opposed?
So for the record, our increase from year to year is 0.9 percent now.
New chart, Mr. Fiore. A new chart? We'll put it on the bottom, they cost too much money.
Okay, but I suspect our 10-year average will drop to probably less than 1.5 percent now.
Okay, moving on to new business at 8:55.
Yes, I'm asking the school committee to approve the teacher displacement and layoff letters that are before you.
Can you go over where each of the teachers are currently working? Can you mention that, actually?
I really shouldn't.
Okay.
Can I?
But I can explain why they're being displaced. One is the, one of our elementary schools has a bubble class, which is a third, fourth grade class. That class is now going to migrate to the fifth grade, so that bubble disappears. So that teacher will then, hence the displacement, will go to another classroom, displacing a one-year-only teacher, who we had hired earlier in the year. The second displacement is from the position at the high school that is being eliminated, and that person will then go to the middle school and push out...
Or retire later?
No, that person actually is taking a position somewhere else.
Oh, okay.
So they'll have employment, or be doing something else, but that's how those two displacements go. And then the third, the last person gets the layoff letter. The middle, the...
Oh.
That's going...
The one that's going somewhere else gets the layoff letter.
Oh.
Okay.
So actually, no one's...
That's correct.
...really being laid off.
Well, they are, but they'll be working somewhere else.
No one was without a job in September.
That's correct.
Got it.
That's good.
That's good to know.
Make a motion to accept the teacher displacement layoff?
Second.
All those in favor, or any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Curtains?
Yes.
Always wanted to talk about curtains in this meeting.
It's not all glory, Dr. Larkin. What we do, to quote Mr. Fazat, I'm asking permission for us to go out to bid, so that we can replace our curtains, so we can have them fire-rated. Currently, the ones are not. We've been cited by the fire marshal, and basically have been told, change them or else. So, hence the request.
Motion to approve the request to seek bid for high school auditorium.
And as a one-time capital item, I would recommend this comes out of our fund balance.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, 8F, request approval to notify NEA, Tiberian, and Council 94 of the school committee's intention to enter into contract negotiations.
I know it's May, and we're a year, almost, probably a little over a year out, but Council 94's contract expires in June of '18, June 30th, and the teacher's contract expires on August 31st of 2018. So I'm asking the committee permission to send letters of notification that we'd like to enter into...
So you just send the letter?
Yeah, it's just, for the teachers' union, it's an official contract item that we have to ask to enter into negotiations, and as a courtesy, also ask 94. That's not to say we're doing it, you know, tomorrow or the next month, but...
Just to notify them.
Because we, over the next, over the summer, we, as a committee, need to start discussing those things, because we don't want to be a year from now, still in negotiations with either union. I mean, sometimes that happens, but...
You have to notify them, though.
Yes, we do.
I make that motion to notify them?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, 8G, request approval for high school seniors to participate in a graduation walk.
Yes, this is, this idea came to us from one of our parents, Sue Zimmick, who's also on our building committee. Sue sent me a write-up about how high schools across the country are doing this. I brought it to the attention of the principals, and at first, we thought, well, that's a great idea, maybe it's something we'll do next year. But Mr. Ashley said, well, let me see if the seniors want to do it, and if they do, would the other principals and their students and staff be willing to do it? They said yes. And I'll let Chris tell the story, but the response was overwhelming. And what it is, is our seniors will get in to their gowns and travel to the schools.
Gowns?
In their graduation regalia, because they were going to be doing it the day before, the last day of graduation. Right, Chris? Right, June, June 8th? And they will go to all of the other four schools to walk through, I'm sorry, except for Pecasa, because they have their field day. They couldn't participate this year.
So why would they get around to...
We're going to bus them.
The bus, yeah.
We're going to bus them.
It's nice.
So we thought it was a great idea, and it's the first annual, and hopefully, something that we'll be doing for years to come.
Okay, I make that motion, it's a wonderful idea.
Do you have a second?
I'm very sad that you can't participate.
We are very sad. We try.
We will do, because this was, this came rather quickly. Next year, we'll make sure everybody can participate.
Okay.
Because I was having a card tap, and then I read it, or something else.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, you did, you seconded? I don't think anyone actually did. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Just trying to keep track. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Approval of Compass Group contract amendment.
I'll let Doug do that one.
Yes, this is a bit of an unusual request. In the process of doing the due diligence work for the recently approved bonds, there's a clause in the tax-exempt bond language that requires the bonding recipient to not have more than 10 percent of the proceeds of the bond affect a nongovernmental or for-profit entity. In the interpretation of some of these rules and regulations, a food service company who is not part of the school department can be interpreted as a for-profit company. One of the, as the lawyers explained to me, safe harbors of this is the clause in our food service contract, the escape clause, which we can give notice saying, we don't want to have you as our food service provider anymore. If that is under 60 days, it's not considered a for-profit entity operating in the high school, and thereby exempts food service from being part of that 10 percent calculation.
Does that sound to bond? The bonding agent gets first cut, if anything, like if you have to pay, they want their money, and you're not...
No, what it means is, the bonds would not be tax exempt, they would be taxable bonds, and thereby having a higher rate that the town would have to borrow at. So by taking advantage of this safe harbor, we're not, basically Chartwell's is saying we can fire them on 50 days' notice instead of 60. So there's really no risk to us, it actually is to our advantage. They've been gracious enough to agree to this, as well as a couple of our other communities. I think Portsmouth and Barrington and Middletown are also in the same predicament, where they're going out for bonds as we are for school construction. Chartwell's has agreed to reduce their, the contract from 60 to 50 days, thereby allowing us to stay tax-exempt if this clause is ever challenged. It's really convoluted.
That's an apt requirement, and I'm sure there is a reason for some of this.
Talk about interpreting something to absurd effect.
Thank you.
Well, you think it's good, Mr. Fiore?
Yeah, I spoke with the lawyer as late as today, and there's no risk to us.
Okay, then I make that motion, then.
All right. All those in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you.
I have no idea what we just did, but I trust you.
You have to take a leap of faith on this one. Apologize for that.
I understand that, but I don't, I don't, I understand, but I don't understand.
I understand, but it's like...
I think it's a long shot that they would be able to demonstrate that 10 percent of the bond cost is going to be for-profit, but we're safe.
That's a pretty long shot. All right. Permission to apply for equipment assistance grant?
Yeah, this is a little more straightforward. RIDE is offering some food service funds available, which I put the summary for in the package. Basically, they're giving grants out for up to $5,000. I checked in with Chartwell's to see where they felt we had our most need. They recommended that we apply for a microwave steamer for the high school, so that's what I'm, that's what I plan on applying for, with the committee's permission, so I'm seeking permission to fill out...
Okay, I make that motion.
Fill out the grant form.
That's a good one.
That's only if you know what a microwave steamer is.
I was going to put a picture, believe it or not, in the package, I apologize, I did not.
We've got a motion and a second.
It's close to 5,000 with the setup, so it takes advantage of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I did.
Yeah, Black, Palish?
Black and Palish?
Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Very good, thank you. Keep your fingers crossed.
Okay. Announcements?
That's very good. I do have one, and specifically, since we had so many parents in our audience tonight, it came to my attention last week, that there is a bill under consideration in the state legislature, that could very well take away our school's abilities, our parents' ability to raise funds for their PTOs with the Box Tops program. I don't think it was at all intention, intentional, by the authors of the bill. With that being said, it, by the time we had seen it, it already had passed the House, and it's now in the hands of the Senate. Senator Philag has been notified, and he has spoken to the person in charge of the bill at the Senate level, and has assured us that they will be reviewing the language, so that Box Tops will not be public enemy number one, when, if and when the bill goes through. So I'm watching it daily, to see if it does come up on the Senate.
And what was the point of this, though?
It's a healthy children's initiative, and I think overall, it was great, it was just the, one of the paragraphs, the wording...
Could have been interpreted...
Yeah. Yeah.
Like the bond.
And just, just last night, I know some of the members were here for the Regional Special Ed Awards Night. It's always a nice evening to recognize parents and teachers who support our kids, and all they do, it really is a nice night, and kudos to Mrs. Cragor for putting it together, which she does annually. Also, the high school awards night is next week. Chris, is it next Wednesday or Thursday? I don't have my...
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at 6:30 here in the high school auditorium. Again, that's also a very nice evening to recognize students, seniors, for their academic achievements that they've achieved over the past four years. And of course, graduation, June 9th, 6 o'clock.